David Mendez.
Here.
Marina.
Here.
Cindy.
Here.
Ruben.
Here.
We have a form. Need to approve the minutes of the previous meetings. You got those in your packets? Are there any, let's see, do I have a motion to approve this? I have a motion. I have a second from Cindy. Is there any discussion? Right? You need to vote. All against? No one against, but I can tell. All right, continue. All right, be assumed. Mr. David Mendez is here, joining us. He's going to give us some, talk to us about the packet they sent to us. Serious work to do. Has a place to redistrict him. And he's our expert, we'll let him explain to us. Mr. Mendez.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you can hear me all right, council members? Is this a okay volume? Can you hear me all right?
Can you guys hear okay?
No, I can hear you all right, Mr. Mendez.
Okay. I'm gonna share, is it okay if I share my screen?
Yes, you can go ahead and do that.
Okay. Let, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can get this going here. And let me know if you can see the front slide, a, a, a slide that says initial assessment by City of Seagrave 2021. Can you hear, can you see that? Okay. So, Council, what I want to do this evening is a couple of different things with you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to cover three main points here about the city's redistricting. And again, I'm David Mendez, I'm with the Bickerstaff firm. You probably remember me, we've, we've visited before. I, I do some of your bond transaction work. And I worked with Dan and the mayor as we, as we sold some bonds last year. You're working with some of the other members of my firm right now to finish up the USDA deal. But every decade, and this is my fourth cycle of doing these projects, I started in the 1990 round. But every decade, as a census comes out, we serve about 100, 125 different counties, cities, schools, and colleges, hospital districts, others, that have single-member districts to help them realign their boundaries. And so what we're gonna do tonight is go over why, the, why, why you, the City of Seagrave has that obligation? What the census shows about the City of Seagrave? And then I'm gonna propose a, a process whereby we're gonna fix the, the redist, the imbalance that exists. So if you'll bear with me, and then I'll take questions on the backside, because of the audio from your end, I think, I'm gonna need Dan to interpret, because I had, I get a lot of feedback on the, when you talk. So I'm gonna have Dan give me the questions from you as we finish. But here, here's the, the deal, is you have, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm doing tonight is presenting an initial assessment.
David, could you stop just a second? We're gonna move closer to the microphone. Many are having trouble hearing, give us just a second.
Okay.
The council's gonna orient themselves a better look at the, at the presentation, David, and to hear you better, just a moment.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're in place, David.
All right, okay, okay. This is gonna be like a mini law lesson here for you guys. And so, but essentially, what I'm gonna do is, tonight is this initial assessment. I'm gonna explain the problem. I'm gonna show you some guidelines and criteria that I want you to adopt, and I'm gonna recommend you adopt, to make us go through the process easier. I'm gonna then, and that's gonna allow us to develop a, a plan to solve the imbalance among the districts, obtain some public input, and then we can get to analyzing and adopting a final plan. And so that's the, in a nutshell, what we're gonna do. But I want to explain why we're doing redistricting. You guys are the legislature of the City of Seagrave. You, as a council, make the laws that apply, the ordinances that apply to the citizenry there. And back in the eighties, or whenever you converted to single-member districts, what, what, the, the, that process of electing each council member from a single-member district caused you to be subject to the one-person-one-vote requirement. And I'm gonna explain that here in a minute. And so I'm gonna explain that, how one-person-one-vote works, and then why the Voting Rights Act and these other constitutional law cases, like Shaw versus Reno, and Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, apply to us in, in certain respects. And so the reason that we're redistricting, and we're looking at the census in the first place, is because you, like the legislature, make the laws for the citizenry. And the law says that you folks must come from equal-sized districts. If one of the council districts has too much population, a lot more population than the next one, then effectively, the people that are in that overpopulated council district are underrepresented at the council. They don't get as much bang for their political buck, or, or bang for their, for the buck, by voting a council member to the chamber, because they only get to pick one representative, plus the mayor to the council. And a district that has few people, and a fewer people in it, gets to elect the same thing. So that, those people in the underpopulated district actually have a greater voice at Seagrave's government. And so what we want to do is have each of the districts be balanced. And so I have an overly simplified example here of how this works. This is a town that has four districts. It has 40,000 people, and just for simplicity, the, the, the population in the census was 40,000. So each district has to have 10,000 people. And in this example, then, the District 1 has 11,000 people, so it's 10% overpopulated. District D has only 8,000 people, so it's 2,000 people underpopulated. And so it's 20% over. And so the maximum deviation, the way the court looks at, at it is that one, A and D are 30% out of balance. And that's too much difference between one district and the other. So what we're required to do is change the boundaries of the districts to bring them under 10% deviation. And we'll show you how, how that looks for Seagrave's here in a few minutes. But once you're triggered it, and I, and your city, the census shows that you've triggered this 10%, you're over 10% deviation, then, once you've triggered it, we gotta look at the Voting Rights Act. Because the law, the Voting Rights Act says that if we have districts from which a minority members elected, whether it's a Hispanic group of citizens that make the majority in the district, or a, a black group of, of voters that make up the bulk of the district, we cannot crack or pack that population as we redraw the boundaries. We wanna make sure we protect those groups to keep their voting strength up in the, in the districts. And so that's a lot of, of the work of this. Now, the flip side of that process is, the law says we can use the Voting Rights Act to protect those minorities, but that's it. That's the only reason we can look at race, to make sure we narrowly tailored our solution to make sure we didn't, we, we didn't adversely impact them under the, under the Voting Rights law. But then we move on to dealing with the stuff that you're interested in, which is, which territory do I serve? Which potholes and streets do I, am I responsible for? Or which parks am I responsible for in my district? And that's what the, the bulk of redistricting has to be about. So I'm, the courts have said that for us to navigate this tightrope between race and the regular business of drawing, of doing city work, we should use criteria to draw the districts that have these kind of factors, as I've got up here on the board. Identifiable boundaries. We wanna make sure we don't draw the, the, the districts down back alleys, or property lines that nobody can see, but that we use identifiable boundaries, like the streets and roads in the community, or, you know, different kinds of, of geographical factors like that. If you have streams, or things like that, that flow through the city. We also wanna make sure that we keep the neighborhoods together. If you, if your neighborhood is what elected you as a council member, then you know what territory your, your voters come from. And we wanna make sure that as we redraw the line, that we don't draw out your constituency. So maintaining communities of interest is important. We wanna, we can't use whole voting precincts here in Seagrave, because every voting precinct is too big to encompass one council district, probably. So, but we'll try to take those into consideration, so that if a voter votes in precinct one for all other purposes, and they can vote for council members in, in a council, particular council district, we'll try to keep them together if we can. I'm not sure how that works, and we're worked there in a small town, but we'll try to fit it. We also wanna work from the plan in the districts you currently have. So we don't wanna start, throw out all the districts the way they are. We wanna work from where you got elected, and just tweak it to the minimum extent necessary to bring you back under that 10% deviation. We wanna make sure the districts follow the census and are of equal size, that they're compact and contiguous, and don't look bizarre-shaped, or, or with fingers sticking out to go gather a particular person, or draw somebody out of a district. The other things is, we wanna keep each of you within your current district and your current constituency, to the extent possible. And again, we wanna make sure we don't adversely affect anybody under the Voting Rights Act. So, I have a, a policy I gave, that, that my team gave to Dan, and he'll present that at the end of this for adoption, but it basically adopts those rules. You're gonna say, we're gonna follow those rules when we draw. So, the other policy that I have provided him with is a policy for public participation. And to the extent we can, we gotta do this pretty quick, because we gotta be done by the end of the year, but certainly by the middle of January. But to the extent that we draw a plan, we wanna put it up at the city website, or post it inside City Hall, so that folks can come look at it, and give you some feedback, and see, and make sure that they give you guidance if they have, or concerns that they may have about the plan you draw. And so I have a policy for, that, that, that Dan has there, that says that people will, that we're gonna make this available, that people can provide comment, that we're gonna have a public hearing at one of the drawing sessions, and people can provide comment by the time we finish that drawings, that public hearing. And so we'll talk more about that when we get to the actual policy, but I, I, I'll, I just wanted to give you, lay that framework. I'm ready now to kinda go into your council district. This is the shape, if you will, of your current council districts, very compactly drawn. And what we did is, we took these territories and the city limit lines that Dan provided, and we applied the 2020 census to them. And that's what's in your report, is this sheet really kind of is the key to the process. So what it shows is that the, the population of the city is now 2,154, 2,154. If we divide that among the five council districts, eat, the, the ideal size of each district is just 431 persons. And so that, if you look at the current population of District 1, the way it's configured, it has a 403 people in it. It's just a, a couple, you know, with 28 people under the, the ideal size, and it's 6% underpopulated. District number two at 427 persons, it's almost exactly, it's within a, a, four persons of the ideal size. District number three is overpopulated, it has 499 people. So it's got 172 many, or, I mean, I mean, 72 many. So District number four at 369 is, is about the same size under, under the ideal size. And District number five is, again, at 5% overpopulated, with about 20 people or so, o, overpopulated. So it's fairly easy to fix the, the population. And you will notice that the predominant, the, the reason I have, so, so we're using this total population to, to, to redistrict, but I have here some information about the racial and ethnic makeup of the citizenry. And 73% of the citizenry in Seagrave are Hispanic, so 70, so you can see that all of the districts are majority Hispanic, third time. They have, each of the districts has some Anglopopulation, ranging from a low of 12% to about 30% from one district to another, but that, that's a, that's a second-largest group. African-Americans comprise about 5% of the population of the city. And so each of the districts has between 3 and 10% of the populated, 2 and 1/2 and 10% of the population. But, so there really aren't gonna be any voting rights issues of any significant nature, because every district you draw is majority-minority. It, it's, they're, they're all minority districts. So we can concentrate on just getting this imbalance fixed. And it is a very, very minor set of changes, probably moving a city block here and there to make the, the changes work. Now, the charts that I gave you have a lot of other detail, but it's kind of difficult, it's not very meaningful. Like, for example, I provided a chart which shows the Hispanic concentrations. And almost every block has Hispanic population, and so it's, it's like that. It, likewise, if, if you look at the African-American concentrations, they're spread out all over the city. Almost every block has some, but with a couple of blocks within the city that have a little bit larger population. In a big city, this would matter a lot. In Seagrave, it really comes down to a simple, simple math problem. I, I'm gonna back up to this slide, and this really kinda tells us what, how miniscule the fixing of this problem is. We probably can fix, if we can find a city block to add population to District 1 from one of its neighbors, let's say if it adjoins 3, you're gonna be able to fix it with, by adding 20 or 30 people, and it'll be close to the ideal size. And by that adjustment, by, District number 2, you don't even have to mess with, if you don't, if you don't want to. So the primary change is gonna be between 3 and 4, once almost exactly the same amount overpopulated that the other one's under. So if District number 3 has 60 people too many, this, District number 4 needs those 60 people, and we can fix the imbalance right there. You know, 5 is, again, a fix of, of 10 or 20 people. So very, very straightforward, and, but you have to do this, you have to go through this process in order to, to not get sued under the vote, the one-person-one vote, before you hold your next round of elections. So I've done this presentation for you tonight. I'll tell you, I did a meeting last week in Montgomery County. They have 650,000 people. It's one of the fastest-growing counties in the country. But they, they were, you, you, 11%, their maximum deviation was 11%. So I met with them, and I had actually, in that case, set up a drawing session with them at the same meeting, because we knew the balance was very small. And I, we, we, they told, the commissioners told me, move that one precinct over there from, from Precinct 1 to Precinct 4, and we're done. And I did that, and they're gonna adopt that tomorrow in Commissioners Court, and be done with this process. And frankly, if Dan and I had had more time, I probably could have organized something like that with you all here. But I didn't know if you could hear me well enough, and we could do this, i, if, if your setup worked well enough there. But what I'm gonna propose today is that Dan and I get together and set up a work session where you guys can sit closer into the machine, you get good audio, I hope you're getting good audio of this. And I will have my computer guy, instead of us having this presentation that I have up, I'll actually put up the map of Seagrave on the screen, and you can tell me which block you want me to move from your district into the neighbor's district, so that we can get this fixed. And we can have, I bet you it would take us 20 minutes, 30 minutes of time, sitting here, you guys over there at your desk, and me here at my desk. And we could fix the imbalance, and you could have the, hold it as a public meeting like this, and then the public can watch us fix the imbalance, and then you could adopt it at a, the next city council meeting. You could, you could have a public hearing after we drew it, and/or before the council meeting, so that in case anybody wanted to give you any, any feedback. Dan told me that you all have a regular council meeting on the 13th. And I bet you that between here and there, working around Thanksgiving, that we could get this done. So that's what I have for you guys tonight. The first, if you, I, I, first I wanna answer any questions you have. And then, second, I would like to see if council is ready to consider and adopt those two policies that I described, the guidelines and criteria, so that we can get, and that, so that Dan and I can get to work on a, on a work session schedule for you.
Do we have any questions, folks? No? All right, there are no questions, David, so.
Mayor? You know, considering the level of imbalance that's there, you know, is there, if I put the map, and let me see if I can get a good, a, a, if you had a few minutes tonight, and I put up a good-sized map, would it be worth us having a little bit of discussion? I don't know you got, who's in 1, and who's in 2, and 3, and 4, and 5. But if you went around the table a little bit, could you guys, maybe, we could get this thing moving by just getting a little input from you all about, you know, hey, my district has too much population? Maybe we could look at this city block, or that city block, and then Dan and I could take some notes, and maybe we could kinda get some of the work started on.
Do you guys wanna do that? You're ready?
You wanna try it?
Sure.
Okay, let me pull up, I'm gonna pull up a different screen.
Do you wanna go get your map? Marina, you got your map with you? Okay.
Yeah, and if you all pull your maps out, and then, let me, let me get my World Doc step up. I'm gonna stop sharing for a second and pull up a different deal here.
One number of mine. Not 3. I'm 4. Calvin says I'm 4. So is, 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 uh? Your 2? I'm the only one that is in that line.
You're 4, Cindy.
I'm 4?
You're 4. And Marina's 3. Oh, you're mine. Oh, I own you now. Ruben 5. Devers 2. Charles is 1.
So let me, let me see if I can make this work for us here. This is the chart that shows your current imbalance. So maybe if we start, for example, with District 1, and if you'll help me on your side of it, I'm gonna go put up the, the picture of the council districts here in a second. But thinking about District number 1, that it needs about, it, it, it's 30, it's 28 people underpopulated. So we need a city block, or something like that, maybe, to move in that regard out of, I mean, into District number 1. And let's, when you look at District number 1, it abuts 3, 2, and 5. And if we look at, just to make this simple, I'm going back. If you look at the chart, the, the guy, the, the district that has the population that is almost identical, that, 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 to what one needs, is 5. District 5 has essentially about the same number, about 25 people or so overpopulated. So I'm just taking the, those two districts which abut each other. And for example, one way to solve it is along the edge, down here on the south side of the map, and I'm gonna try to zoom into that part of the map here. And this is not a live map, you know, I'm just got a PDF, I've, I've got the same thing you guys do over there. But what I'm gonna do is, is just show you how easy this is to fit. So down here in this, by the park, on, near the Chamber of Commerce, if there was a block in, along Avenue J between 5th and 2nd Street, that we might consider adding into, for example, District number 1, it, there might be sufficient population in a couple of these blocks to get, get, get number 1 straightened out. Any thoughts in that regard? Or, and certainly, you can also see that likewise, District number 3 abuts it, and it's got 60 extra people in it, that need to be, that, 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 that it's gonna have to shed some of. So you could look at any of this area, right up here between 12th Street and Avenue K, and, and add some of that territory into number 1, and fix the problem. Does that make sense? I mean, I know.
We need to move out of 3 and 5, and put in 1 and 4.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I, I mean, and, and I'm just suggesting, I mean, I, you, you can take it from any of these, because look, look, you've got options for one. Numbers 3 and 5 are give you some, some, some places you can add.
Going down to the bottom, David, please.
Yeah, and one thing I can do, guys, that would really be, make it easy for you all, is I can print this map, and I can tell you exact, I can put a number on each of these city blocks, and say, this one has 5 people, this one has 10, and just show you, you know, exactly what the census shows for each block. And then you guys could, in the, in the privacy of your own home, each of you kinda look at the map and say, well, you know, I, I can, I can see, you know, sharing that territory with District 5, or 3, or whatever. And I could send that along to you all, and do your homework. And then we could, that when we put this up on the screen for you all, we, we would have it live, and we'd run the numbers here, and you could see what the, the actual numbers were on each district when we modified it.
David, let's do that, that, we all seem to like it, if you do that.
Okay, that'd be pretty cool, and, yeah, I think this would be a very simple exercise. And I think you'll find it enlightening, and I think the public will appreciate, you know, hey, well, I get some voice over in District 1, or 3, or whatever, you know? But, but that's what I had for you all tonight, and, and Dan and I could send you, circulate that to you all, and then you all can tell me when you wanna get together, and we can get to the next step.
Thank you, David.
You're welcome. Do you have, need anything else from me tonight?
Well, you need that amendment, are you, we need to pass the permission to sign those documents?
Yeah, I, I think, Mayor, if you guys are comfortable with what I presented, and the process that I've outlined, I recommend that you adopt the policy that, that I've provided to, and let me put that slide back up. If you have a moment, let me just pull that back up here. Uh, well, I'm gonna pull the actual policy up if you're good with that, let me do that. Yeah, if you have a second.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, let me actually pull the slide up that I want you to adopt. I mean, the actual document, that is how it looks. So, um, let me know if you can see, hold on, I need to move this over to this. Can you see that, uh, order number blank that I've got right there?
Yes.
Okay, so here's the critical part of the order. As I mentioned when we were going through the presentation, section number one says, to the extent practical, we're gonna use easily identifiable geographic boundaries to, to draw the district. So we're gonna go down city streets, we're gonna, you know, work around the parks and other, uh, major thoroughfare. We're gonna have communities of interest maintained in a single district. So if your church group all goes to one church, or if you have a neighborhood that is comprised of a certain, uh, set of people, you need to let us know that we're not splitting your neighborhood, you know, where, uh, that these are your, your people. And then council districts should be composed of whole voting precincts. I, I am fairly certain we're not gonna be able to stay within whole voting precincts. Dan can correct me, but I think you're probably, the whole town's comprised of one or two, uh, election precincts in the county, isn't that right, Dan?
Just one, I believe, isn't it? Precincts, the county precincts, how many? Oh, one precinct, just, they just read district, uh, the county, county just read district. The county to our, we're just in precinct one now.
Right, that's what I thought. So you're gonna be in one election precinct, so number three doesn't really, we're not gonna be able to practically avoid that. But that's a, that's a policy that the courts like to see you adopt. Also, that, that we're gonna have, uh, kept the basic, single member districts the way they are. We're just gonna change them to the minimum extent necessary to get the numbers straightened out, to get them in balance. That's number four. That we're gonna configure them, uh, relatively equal population, we're gonna use the census and I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, we're using the census data for this, so we don't have any other data to use other than the 2020 census. That each of the districts is gonna stay compact. You have some of the most compact districts I've ever seen. And I want to make sure that when we finish, they're gonna continue to look nice, square, chunky districts. We're not, they're not, they're not gonna have lines going all over the town. Uh, and then they're gonna be, uh, we're gonna make sure that you can, uh, that we're, that your voters stay in your district. If you are uncomfortable that you're losing some of your tried and true voters and you're getting you elected. You need to make your voice heard on, on council to make sure your district stays with your voters. And then we want to avoid any racial gerrymandering. I, I don't see how we, we get into any racial issue. Everybody in town, uh, the, the predominant groups as we've identified are all over the city. So whatever changes we make are gonna affect everybody the same way. And that's a policy, this is kind of, follows those little blocks that I had on the PowerPoint. So that's the first one, Mayor. And if you all, you can adopt it by making a motion in a second to adopt that policy and then Dan can formalize it for your signature.
Okay, while he's looking, can I have a motion, guys? One of you? I've got a motion for Ruben, a second Cindy, all in favor? Okay. Where are you now?
Here's the second one, Mayor. So these are guidelines for in case there's a person in the public that wants to provide you with some input and comments. And what this policy says after the wherazas is that if somebody wants, the, uh, the city, uh, is gonna go through the process. And if somebody wants to, uh, provide you with input, they should propose plans in writing and that we can read that are legible, so I don't want them on the back of a napkin or something where we can't read them. So, uh, that, we, they need to give them to you in a clear, in a clear, fully articulate, uh, manner. They need to show the total population, voting age, population of the different races and all. And this is something that we want to make sure, if somebody wants to make a suggestion, that they, uh, that they use the same data we're using. And we can tell them what we have and, uh, most people, if they're into providing you with this kind of input are gonna have this kind of debt. We want to make sure that anybody who gives you a plan or an example that they want you to consider redraws the whole city. We don't want somebody coming and say, well, I want to run for office in, in council member, not District Number Three. So I'd like you to draw it like this, so I can get elected, because I can get my mother-in-law in there and all my relatives. You know, so you don't wanna, you, you, you want somebody to draw all five districts. And that's what number three is about there. The next one is that plans will conform to the criteria that you adopted, so that you have to follow those criteria you just voted. You want any, everybody else to follow them as well. And then they should, if they just want to give you comments, instead of writing a plan, they just, they need to do the comments in writing. And, uh, what we're asking people, uh, is to provide those, uh, to provide their name and address and email if they have one, so we can follow up with them, uh, uh, to get back more feedback if we need more information from them. And finally, number seven says that all comments and proposed plans will be submitted to the council by the close of the public hearing. And that public hearing that I'm talking about is a public hearing either right before you adopt or right at the last work session. Dan and I need to figure out where to schedule your public hearing. But basically, those are the rules in case somebody wants to participate with the council and say, I've got some ideas, council members, here's how I want to draw it. And they can give you that. So that's the basic blueprint and you can add things to this if you would like to make it more liberal. I mean, less, less difficult or more flexible or however you want to do it. But that's, that's what my, my cities have been adopting generally.
Okay, um, I need a motion to adopt this order. I have a motion from Cindy, second from Marina, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, David.
Mayor, council members, it's been a pleasure, I'm gonna go cook dinner now, so.
Good for you.
Anyway, but, uh, Dan and I will be back to you shortly with the map, with the population, so you can do some homework. And then we'll schedule a work session or two for you to, to get through this process. I look forward to seeing you guys then.
Thank you, David.
Good evening, guys, bye, I'm gonna log out, uh, Dan. And I gotta stop sharing, I think. Let me see if I can figure out how to do all that.
I think one maybe, I mean, it is just a simple matter. Moving a couple of blocks in the district should not impact any of the great, but it does not, but it impacts the racial balance of our district. We just need to balance the districts. Sixteen, about the sixteenth. I've heard that. How about you? Eighteen, alright, we'll meet on the eighteen. And then we have to have a second one to read the following Monday or Tuesday, that's, thanks anyway, so I don't want to go too late. I bet we can do it on the eighteen, so. Uh, we'll probably, be, Dan here?
Yeah, it would probably be the easiest.
We'll have that very big map, you should be able to look up your mission. He's gonna send us maps, so someone knows how many people in each block. That'll help in your decisions.
Yeah, I'll get you all of that kind of information, since I get it from him, I'll share.
Okay, alright, so I have, I have a motion that we, um, set the date for the initial drawing session, the final district, you know, eighteen, at six thirty here. And it'll be a Zoom meeting. Okay? Alright, I have a motion. I see Cindy, I heard her voice. Marina, okay? Uh, and then, uh, all in favor? Okay. So it's eighteen, alright, alright. Now, we're gonna consider and take action as necessary, Dan. Uh, it's your turn, bring that chair up here, put on the hill, Dan's recently had knee surgery. So talk to us about Texas Communities Group. Uh, I, I've known Danny a long time, you guys know him from Purdue. Uh, Purdue was a law collection, I did the taxes and other things. Yeah, but, such as communities, for our, for good.
Thanks, thank you, Chris. Uh, my name is Danny Barrett, I'm from Lovetown. Uh, I've been with the law firms thirty-eight years. I've been, we've been, I've been in Lovetown, I think, since, since that time. Uh, Purdue, we do your property tax lessons through, uh, the press, and signal, and have, we've shared with you. Rick can, can attest to this, uh, well, he was working in James County and also Dawson County. There was always a little bit of an issue sometimes, Dawson County, a bit of a trust problem. And, uh, so I was bouncing ideas off him, uh, for some time. When we started Texas Communities, this back in twenty sixteen. Uh, we kind of did a pilot project for about a year, and we built your website, it was a template. We really started building in twenty sixteen. Uh, but before you, is it, is your contract? And, and what became of that, there's two things that, that we work on through that property search contract. One is trust properties, which are properties that had gone to tax purpose. Did not sell for the minimum bid. And so now you all know what your school does, what the county, and in trust. Uh, trust properties kind of are a little negative. Uh, you go to the tax revenue law, uh, because it's government alone. And generally, the city, then, that's something that I think if you're, usually, city, uh, they're on state. Uh, and it's always kind of been a contentious point, uh, before. Uh, we started TCG, it was with TCG, some good things this county's doing and that county's doing. We kind of put them together to, as practice, uh, which works really well. Uh, the other thing that, uh, we worked with on that is, uh, I think probably our best group. Um, after we started Texas Communities Group, we were looking for ways, we get a lot of calls from city, and, hey, what can you do to help us with this problem? Uh, it's vacant, abandoned, or collapsed, they structure, and we noticed they're trilling with taxes on it. Can you sell it? Well, we would go through the process before, and generally, the average cost of a tax law to forfeit by the time you give it to sale is about eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars. So, we can go up or down depending on how many defendants you have. And a lot of times those properties, because they were collapsed, they were very real bad. And so if you get up, they did prior, um, three hundred, five hundred dollar value, well, it's worth. And so it was a, in a comfortable way, a costly way of going that way. And so TCG paid for, from that experience. And one of the things we do is work with city, city staff in identifying properties that need tax requirement for real property taxes. That are being paid, but we have to have somebody for knowledge. They can say it's been paid. And so we put together a list of tattoos, it's five links of tattoos, or three, even four links. Rick tells me, y'all are doing some things, many tax properties where you may, uh, incur some consequences for you. Uh, on those situations, they only get three. And what that's designed to do, is those properties where maybe a family owned it some years ago, they died, no probate or due. Kids scattered in the area are hard to find, nobody's taken through the property, nobody's really used to it. What it allows us to do is move those people home. We have pretty timely patches. Uh, it's been a really great tool. Uh, we're required to post it in the community, we're required to get notice to all owners and heirs that we cannot, uh, but it loses very quickly. About two, three months process. And so many of our towns that we represent up here, so I think we have this mission. And so TCG was kind of creating, maybe an extra tool to the city to combat that. Uh, it's been very successful. Um, what we found on the tax mirror situation is we fully expected none of those properties to sell that tax. We felt like, okay, they would be started off and we would need, you know, so. But what we found is a lot of people who are next door, across the street. Uh, maybe they had to lift that property seven, eight years or something like longer, they're interested in buying. And that's just something I think we overlook this year, but it's been very effective. We sold a lot of properties at the actual tax, the neighbors, people in the neighborhood that wanted peace. So it's been a really good program, uh, that without doing a lot on the city staff. Um, it's just going through a list, we try to put it in some position, or, put the size of that dress. Or somebody, uh, be it a public works, or a chief, police, or a council person. The tax code allows for anyone who knows of the property. Of course, I don't know that, but a next door neighbor's across the street. But it, it really goes well, we do all weekend, uh, the tax code allows, you know, for postings and mailings. Uh, we try to, it's twenty twenty-one, we try to take advantage of social media, Facebook page, we put on. Your city runs a website, which I think most of them do now, and they use Facebook pages, we put it on there. And we've had outstanding results, and, you know, Joe's seeing it and going, hey, look, my best friend growing up. He lives in Odessa now, and they get on the computer and talk to each other, and before we know it, we have taxes paid with some of these. So it's been a really good tool that just goes in and just starts working. And what it does on the legal tax side that we live here, obviously, we're starting to pop, trying to get much money, change where it is. And what we, we do that, there's some low value problem pops. Those properties we need progress, and some of the coding portion, all the same issues. Uh, having coding portion already, they, on. And so it works really well with that and continually moving. So, uh, those are the two things that we need in this contract. Uh, the trust properties, we created an online bid system, it's still a still big process. Uh, you will still have approval over every prop, property that was sold. City would have to prove, school would have to prove, county would have to prove, and we like that. We go through all those boards, we hope to get a good buy. We don't know everybody who gets by, you know, in those, uh, we put a signage, we try to do a lot of advertisements, go. Not very many people know about trust properties, fifty-six, I've ever bought a trust property in my life, about two houses, that's it. Um, and so we want to educate people on how you know that, what you did, what you did, we buy it. And, uh, just try to get more interest and, and more competition, and what that means is that property might have sold two hundred or five hundred dollars. We feel like we can give you four hundred or a thousand. In addition to that, uh, we've gone in and done near local agreements. Because not only does the city own the property, the school and county too, so the own property, which costs ownership, right? The taxes or cleanup and mandates. Uh, what we've done with the intermodal agreement, we said, we resell this property. Uh, what we've done with the intermodal agreement, we said, we resell this property. Let's assign those resale dollars to our city. And use them for dedicated cleanup. And what that does is all the other entities that have had a check out of their budget. And create that resale, put it into a cleanup. And they can use that time to demo a property, new things. Some cities are using to create a mowing program, lawn mowers. Been able to mow and re- work and things like that. As long as we can clean up, correct? We since sixteen, we have sold now. Um, I think we're approaching three thousand parcels of property that we've sold. And we've eclipsed two million dollars as of. When we started this. You know, we live out here in West Texas and some of these properties aren't the highest in investment dollars. But that's on the bill, trying to do it entirely. But it's worked. And I think our advertising, the things we did. We've been able to do more that. So when we start this, I hope we can, I think we can, we're gonna try to. But we've been able to do it where through competition, we can say what it is. At two million dollars, uh, we put back into our community for, for the cleanup. Those dollars previously went maybe some for office. There's offices, these are closed offices. To send space and a tax code that takes it off the top, the maintenance, ventilation, safeguard. And I think that's an important force. And a very valuable deal, the money is tied. Um, it creates a cleanup. Uh, I always go back to the city that did that, Purdue was my first. Seven or eight seasons. We had about a hundred and parts. In about a four month period, we sold, uh, all of those except some. We cleared out all those properties in three month period from the November through the end of January. Created about twenty-six thousand dollars. Nine of those properties that we cleaned up, we turned around and sold. So it's a management deal, you know, I feel like if we own it, as any. Uh, it's a great time to clean it up, make sure that it's all the past ones. So there's management tools with it. Uh, we have a problem property app that we, we want to vote to you for the council and your staff. Uh, communication is a big deal. Um, if we know what property is bothering you, uh, your community, we can tell you something that we suggest. Um, so we have a, a phone app that we make available for Android and Apple users. Stand in front of the property, take a picture of it, it's. It comes to us, uh, pulls GPS address, visual comment section. You can say it's a vacant lot next to the, you know, yellow house, corners northwest third. And we'll see it, we've had. We work with the property for forever, we check the ownership, see what the tax situation, where the owners are, and we make a best process. Maybe it's a, a real property warrant. Paying, settle from the picture. We know we've got five years of tax. Or maybe it's already in the tax foreclosure process. You go, if not, if there's no taxes due, we can tell who's paying the tax. And that way the code, you know, and I think what we kind of discovered along the way is if we can take a portion of your property, handle it once. There's less work for your code enforcement, where they can concentrate a little bit, cover the resources that. Because some of those properties where the owner is non-existent, it's really hard to do code enforcement. They're not ready for the block. You can spin your wheels and spin your wheel, ultimately, this is going to have to do the bill. And so this is a good learning there. So that's what's before you, the charge. Um, when we first started, it was really hard. But we, we're an add-on fee. Uh, Purdue Group, we don't cost many money, the half pair pays our fee, so that doesn't cost me anything. Uh, as we've grown the business, add-on fee, we're not trying to do anything under the hand. Have the employees at their cost do the extra work. Our fee is two thousand five hundred. Um, we've been very happy that we generate. That each year for each of our cities. Uh, for some reason, we were unable to create that, they're not responsible for any shortfall. So say we go through, we acquire some property, we turn around, we're going to sell it. We sell them for about twelve hundred dollars, they're not, they're not responding to the financial. We just go off in the next season. Um, so it's designed to do a little bit more work. You know, we've raised a lot of towns, we all have this issue. And, uh, they're now working, that's setting the rules, the processes. And every town has been saying, and companies have been very. Continually work, uh, we see it work, you know, this, every year, we start an audit. So that's what's before you.
The, uh, number one thing I've probably approached about since evening. After the time of those, despite the matter is, we need to clean our city. We're gonna do it humanely, we retain control as soon as possible. We, you know, if we know something that, whatever, you guys can still say no. But we're not having any real money here. This is a program that can help us. It can help Renee, and she's shaking her head. Uh, it can help Cal, and both of them have talked to me about mobile control because they know mobile stuff. Uh, it won't hurt people. That's the one thing we definitely do, we've got a bunch of poor people here. And they're, who are very deadlineless and struggling with their lives. But, but there are many who are fighting profferments about access to the level that's happening to our business. Our public works folks and our judges and doing all sorts of things like to, uh, do code enforcement actions to clean our problems up. Uh, and I know we have several properties that are being torn down. Any thoughts?
Yeah, um. I call it. Last year, I've been calling every other property I've called. And again, I mean, Chris said Purdue's a drug. Ball, ball, and they said, well, we'll get it to the right person. How long does that cost us to pay? That property has been vacant for, I'm forty-two, probably going to run for two years. And we'll get back to you, we'll get back to you, so how long does that?
That is a great question, that's why I would serve. I, uh, if you look at a piece of property where, uh, there's, say ownership is missing. You know, everybody knew him, yeah, they died back in seventy, eighty, whenever, but they had no probate will, it wasn't clean. Line of title to the heirs or anybody else. So nobody could really leave that unless there's a lot of legal work on there. But I have some half-baked spareship, lots of work on their part. For us to foreclose is the issue that I was talking about. So we have to show due diligence and pay. We have to find as many as possible potential heirs without the help of the probate will. And so in a lot of instances, we may. This is the problem with it, if you have a very low value property. And you might end up having to serve a personal service. General, well, different individuals. Uh, it usually costs about a hundred dollars or so for a citation. And, and the cost, he, uh, the, the ability to do that. What the real property tax warrant is. Is if we have somebody like yourself that says, hey, that property's been vacant. How long, but as long as it's over the last twelve months. We don't have to serve them with service protection. We post it in the communities, uh, we'll have posted at the courthouse. We probably posted at city hall, we posted at the president's, if people pay the taxes. We've probably posted a Dixie Dog. Anywhere where people come and go, the more people that know about it, the better. We'll post that same notice on your city website, we all have to do that. And get that word out there. And we don't have to do the personal service. We still mail it, we still give them a, a mailing, that's a lot cheaper than having a hundred. Whatever costs and so, and so they move fast. And so from the moment we file that affidavit. Uh, vacancies. And apply for the warrant, two to three months later, we can sell that property. And once it goes to the sale, you know, the property owners, their rent needs to pay the taxes. They pay the taxes, we put them in. Um, we tell them it's a cleanup effort. And you have these property name and time, you make sure it's safe and ordinance. We also have a name and number. So it's just a, a better way of doing it, but we have to have somebody, you know, locally with knowledge of the property, doesn't have to be a council person. It doesn't have to be a city staff person, it has to be somebody that signs our affidavit. So it's been vacant. And then, you know, this, this code, uh, section in the tax code came out of the Metroplex. Harris County during. Like that, which is not currently any common up in those states. And it gives us a, you know, expedited way of doing it. And so probably what they're saying is, yeah, Purdue has those, like we have all of them in the tax count. But we're looking at which ones we can move and bring back. What TCG does, look at which ones clean up. It's solely looking at eyesores. I mean, vacant abandoned, collapsed.
If it's not, it's a siege that. And you look on a third one, which they told. Like, I, it's not, I guess they're giving.
They might, and if they. And, and, you know, maybe notices are, we're not finding them either. Uh, we don't have to find them. So those people, even if we don't have an address or a, as long as we go through the process. They should have rights of redemption and things like that, use one of the regular tax. But it's an expedited number to, to, in two, three months. Put it in somebody else's hands. And what it is, is kind of those properties that have been forgotten. And out of the economy, basically, nobody's paying taxes, they're supposed to pay here. Kind of puts them in somebody else's.
I have a question, uh, what about just? Let them pay their taxes. What is the procedure or something?
Yeah, they get notices, um, we're, you know, if each year's going with taxes, they're going to.
How many years, I mean, I personally have lost. And so, uh, you know, one has stairs, you know, that chairs. And, you know, that can come back.
It's a right of redemption.
And, yeah, the right of redemption, but I. Some of them, you know, are fifteen years taxes, and some of them just pay a few years. What, what?
Value, value of the dollars, do we?
Okay.
Uh, or it's kind of a balancing.
Is there a certain amount?
Not necessarily so, sometimes. Uh, we're trying to get to the minions. You know, uh, if you look at a. One of the reasons I was pushing this, if you look at the collection company. That are permanent, that everybody has involved. It is collection. It doesn't say anything about, well, we're gonna handle bad properties. It's a collection. And so right, everybody's trying to get as much as they can back to the county, this is school, this is city. So we're looking at properties, uh, going after the one. You don't, you don't see all the ones that don't go to sale, you kind of see the ones that go to sale. Most of them, the ones that were working off, we take care of.
So like, okay, our president's district, like, they saved everything that wasn't paid. For that year. And then like, say if someone is not paid for five years, then they just add that to.
Yeah, this is, you know, one year, four, next to the last.
But he's still able to live in his house.
Um, there's not a ton of that, that's not in some sort of agreement or some sort of. I know with properties, you've got some property rights that are probably in their past, they've been due um, over the last ten, fifteen years, seen more of the furrows, or, or decided you've got older. Maybe they've got a disability, they can have that for, that you do. I know a lot of it. I want to say twenty-seven percent. So you, you have, and, and then normally, you know, mostly across board, you have another ten or eleven percent that's been paid out. We try to work with it, but we think that's, hey, I can't pay this entire deal.
Well, and I think we have some properties, because I live on the campus. I think we have some properties that someone's not paying the taxes, but that's a person living.
That's not.
The person whose name is on the tax row that's responsible for paying the taxes is not living in that.
Like a rent.
Well, a rental or a family. You know, something like that. So, I mean, I didn't know how that worked. And, you know, you get somebody that.
If you're a regular tax forewoman, you would notify via personal service, your property owner. And we know they're really.
But y'all don't have a certain figure, like, once it becomes a thousand dollars, do we start doing more?
Not really, because if we, if we get down to a thousand dollars, I guess more than five years, we might be down seven or eight.
Yeah.
Um, it's just that, what we found is, you know, we're mainly, that's pretty good, I think, our usually usual rating. Since we were a bit older, I think you seem a little bitter down there. Of course, our areas out here, maybe we'll add, we're COVID. And, uh, we've always been sixty to seventy percent collected in the first twelve months. We've seen it difficult in the last year. But, uh, but this, this allows us to kind of. Go in and, and do.
What you're saying, someone has, you know, their taxes are, say, four thousand dollars a year versus their neighbors. Five hundred dollars a year.
Or eighty-seven dollars.
Or eighty-seven.
I sold some properties in children's taxes, two, three months ago. And COVID nine, dude, sixty, seventy, something else. But we did through the tax network program, because they're vacant.
But if I didn't pay my taxes for two years, you're probably, you're so complete.
You'd probably get from this.
Before, first year that you sold, I don't know.
That's actually.
I didn't know how late, you know, you would think it would just be so many years. You know, if you hadn't paid your taxes in five years. They should do so, but I, I see what you're saying, it's cost.
What costs are the big, uh, a, a big factor in this? Because if, if we go and, and have a sale. And I think what was a turning point, really Purdue's the only firm that's in J W A from small town to town. Uh, we've made an error track. Long time ago, a secret to next move. Uh, but, uh. It's, it's, it's cost. Cause, cause, uh, you know, if it doesn't sell with taxes. Share is to be paid, property is to be paid, tax is to be paid, burn is to be paid. And I'm going to pay this. Take these properties and do something with it. You know, there's, we've already lost, by the way.
Well, and a lot of times that y'all sell, like I said, really that, that you'll get there and have the properties that were missed.
Are pulled.
Or somebody's gonna pay the taxes.
And what you've done, we've executed some warrants and numbers. And we walk away without any. There's no guarantee we're gonna be. Out here, kind of on the western side, the south point, property who you want to demand.
Any other questions? How do you guys feel about this? Got all your motions. I have a motion moving to have you sign this contract and accept their service. And I have a second motion, all in favor? Okay.
I made a notation on this contract, that last paragraph.
All right. We have the lawyer, we have, we have the lawyer.
I can read this out and read the sheet probably. And I'll send the, very, very, very.
Send it to David. Dan, are you, are you not connected to me? No, I, I just don't need to take this.
Oh, okay.
I was the city secretary.
Thank you very much. We, I'm standing.
If you say phone home, it's seriously.
That's, yeah.
They're out there looking for your head.
Thank you.
Okay. Go on then, item nine, we're going to discuss and take action for top resolution twenty-one, eleven, oh eight, Sol A, awarding an engineering contract late in the American Rescue Plan. Uh, okay. We solicited, uh, question for passion, engineer to do this, Dan and I graded the packages, West Texas Consultants are, I mean, they're all fairly close points, but in terms of familiarity, West Texas water, and the things we want him to try to do, uh, we, we want to reveal the segments. So I need your permission to sign this resolution, Seagrave, Texas, authorizing professional service providers selection of rural lives, local visual recovery programs, through the American Rescue Plan Act twenty twenty-nine, and we selected West Texas Consultants. My motion is that one. Sandy gave me a motion, a second, everything is all in favor. Okay, that's everybody. Okay, um, okay, um, item ten, consider take action, this may be me, sir, I'm routine administrative officer, and department reports, you have everybody's detailed reports, like, I'm hoping you're finding those helpful, uh, to you. Couple of things I want to point out, I want the chief of police to talk about, good deals and police cars, and just, and great news, start sitting, it's important. And so we, uh, we sold three vehicles on good deal.com, which is three tacos, uh, we did not mean the resident reserve on the, on the, the old, uh, uh, the three tacos came out to twenty-seven thousand, two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Uh, the little pickup was up to thirty-five hundred dollars, the reserve was five thousand, so Dan's going to approach it again and see if we can get some more money for it. Uh, real quickly, uh, you know, back to those statutes that I gave you, there's a quote for a twenty twenty-one dollar charter, uh, that my, my deal is, uh, and so we have another unit, this, this unit is one of the very last ones that's available, uh, they're having to transit in, in on the ships, uh, they are very, very expensive to install. Uh, the dog chargers is one of two that's left and one brand that's going to be looking at maybe six, forty-eight. Uh, I, I researched several local, uh, dealerships, uh, again, the dog chargers are usually the cheapest thing, a pickup or a run, I don't know, a pickup or a run is about fifty to sixty thousand dollars. And so, you know, I talked to the mayor, talked to Danny a little bit, uh, my, my deal is, if you've got an opportunity to get this vehicle right now, I say we go ahead and have twenty-three dollars each, um, it's going to cost us about, um, and in all it is on, on what y'all want, I'm quickly anything that y'all decide, uh, it's going to cost us about four to forty-five hundred dollars to get it net completely. Now, Billy's going to do that, Billy will do the, the work, this is just a, so that's, that's partition, uh, that's console, that's everything that's needed for the vehicle. And the partition, everything, I would love that these partitions, we had that open, unfortunately, it's going to come up to a charger and, and so the vehicle is white in color, uh, I talked to the mayor about it, uh, I don't have the box around the front or, or my control, whatever we need to do, uh, I would love to have it black, but again, it's a, I mean, there's two vehicles and one brand left and a lot. And so I talked about, or me and the mayor talked about getting it wrapped, uh, I called the hill graphics in Sentinel, and I called the, the place that we usually love, you know, car. They don't do full, my vehicle, wraps, Sentinel does, and it's all. And so with, with the equipment and everything, if we sell the pickup for thirty-five hundred, which I think it will be easy, Dan, what would you, uh, I think we'll get to thirty-five hundred, so it will be up to over, you know, thirty-one hundred or thirty-three, thirty-one thousand five hundred thirty. And so we're out, the, the money, the rack, they go to the rack? No. Again, we, I'm sure put another couple thousand percent in the rack. Yes, that's what. We did get, uh, we, we signed the, uh, notice sheet on the, uh, USDA sewer construction project, it's starting this week, by all accounts, uh, and so they immediately refunded us on four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that's the money we had in account on the shares, we got it. Um, and that money's available to us, but there's a lot of money there. We, we, while he's down a water pump and leak, maybe a head guest, no, yes, sir, I don't know, right now, so they're going to look at it, but the chief did an awful lot of work and then into gut deals, uh, make sure that tracked the law and procedure and actually realized a great deal more money than we expected also. Uh, and I think it's going to start missing gut deals at some point here, she's got some fleet vehicles, uh, might be able to realize some money. What I'm asking is for a motion to allow him to buy his car and to, and to get it honestly fixed up, or at least, uh, whether you want to wrap it or not, that's your call. I'm making a motion to do all that and do it on what we've got, we've got, I mean, we don't want to get crazy though, we don't want to get crazy though, we can have it, we can
Well, it needs work, it needs, we got.
Well, it's, it's hard to take into care of what, of our capital.
And, I mean, the project, that's a working, I mean, this is one of the, yeah.
We're not going to be able to. Okay, do I have a motion? I have a motion from Blue Moon, second from Denver, all in favor, Carl, all equipped, Billy and I. Thank you, Chief. Thank y'all, appreciate y'all. Good deal. And now, Calvin, Eric, I ask you, all right, go ahead and go. Did you have a roll? You have a question?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, the man in county, working buildings diligently, as everybody knows, um, and the report, uh, shows a number of things, packing yards, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I have met with Brian Lawson, precinct one commissioner, he is now commissioner of all of what elevated since the, of all of secret, so, uh, we're not split anymore. Ryan has three houses, you guys have previously been there, have their addresses, um, that want to, want to be removed, uh, he's hauling dirt right now, he's usually always moved to do that, but, uh, uh, they're going to come down four, four years in, so that, that's a business. And then, what, what at least means sort of exciting is, is that Chase D six has given us permission to tear down the motel, uh, not the Redwood Park, Redwood Park says, that's the old Catholic apartment, the other cell, so he signed the documents, you know, what I need is a motion for you guys to approve.
Just all of that that we've done.
That's right, the part of the north end, part of the north end, so everything else is going to come down. I have a motion from Sandy, I have, and this, there's a second, all in favor? Thank you, guys, and that's, that's right there, that cleans up the market more than in a really good way.
This is not some power control because he's really got that house, he's going, uh, you know, he has a need.
Cool, okay, uh. I have an email sent to the city from Garrett, uh, uh, saying that he wants to have a Christmas tree lighting ceremony in front of the hotel on December first, and, uh, intended to extend it from five thirty to seven thirty, there'll be some free hot chocolate, live repetitive music, there's going to be a grinch and sand walls, they can be the same. Re- welcome the introduction, benediction, pledge of allegiance to the plan, we're going to light the tree, and then, uh, and then, uh, Garrett is going to let me throw a, a switch and one will let you reason, and some, and some children are going to help. So, uh, what he has asked, uh, was to be close, pardon me, during this timeframe, there's vehicle traffic, map, three ten main, five eight, uh, the enhanced police presence, the previous chief about that explained with that.
At one minute.
And he wants to run.
We bumped, we bumped it to April second.
Huh?
Uh, December second. December second, we bumped it one day after some feedback from the community.
Okay.
So December second.
So the day, December second.
You know what day it is?
Thursday.
And so, and he wants to run a lighter extension form from the trade to the existing hundred twenty point outlets, located on the utility pole, at the corner of Main and Avenue, that will previously use yourself in Seagrave, I assume they still work. So, I, I made a motion that you guys are good with this.
With this, there is, uh, nothing good to do, we're prepared to be there for the town, uh, December ninth, only third, we're going to have a private, which is, we get out here, I think that, with that, so we want to.
You need to cancel, like, the edge of street closure or anything?
No, we have, we have, we just have to work with the, we don't, gee.
So, uh, December ninth.
Yeah. Okay, so December second, we're going to have tree lights, ceremony, I think that's neat, you've done a really good job of hotel, it's nice.
Thank you, sir.
Really looks nice. A lot of us have wanted a history there, so. My, uh, my, uh, wife's great grandparents stayed there the night before her parents' parents', so it is a very special place. Yeah, so, okay, a motion? All right, for both of those. And I have a second from Sandy, all in favor? Okay, I don't think I finished the administrative department entry reports, did anybody have any questions?
I just have one, you'll get on the bill for stuff we pay, this is from a larger company, we, we pay, we need auto, oil, surplus, four hundred dollars, so auto bill.
This is the dump truck, our dump truck, this.
Oh, it's repair, yes, repair, she's down there, they need to hold it on, they have a, okay.
While I was speaking about that, um, they are starting work out there this week, I think probably tomorrow. Yeah, uh, for the shore.
I see.
There's a, they're going to start, but it'll be sporadic at first, um, there's some equipment out there, we need to get out of there, that we may have to move to the, go to your grounds or somewhere.
We don't have to move it off.
Not off, okay.
Oh, there is, I'm, I'm.
We just got, no, no, it's just junk from everywhere.
Oh, oh.
It's that old junk out there, somewhere, we're going to have to get rid of it.
Is it Connor?
It's a, a bunch of vehicles that were, they're different people, county, fire department.
Well, is it so, when we, I don't know what junk on process is happening, so.
The place, the chief of police, when they have been working to, to, just along that line this afternoon, I got a proposal from a, an auction company in Reeves and something, I, I didn't have a chance to look at it, but they will do live auctions, no charge to the city, auction anything off scrap iron, they'll auction off the water tower once it comes down, they'll handle that for us and live auction, and, uh, I'll get, I'll pass that information along to the councilors as I have a chance to look through it. Okay, thank you, Danny. Anyway, we're going to figure this out somehow, so just clean up our areas. Well, there, there's a house there, and we've talked about that, there's a water line out there, and there's a well we're concerned about, we're going to have to flood, and that can be costly, so, anything else? All right, I'm going to move on, then, public comments, maybe my public comments, okay? Um, any items of discussion, no, actually, we can take it this time. First, uh, Pastor Vida Martinez Senior is celebrating his fifty-eighth anniversary at, at their church in Son, and, uh, I've been asked to, uh, recognize that, and, um, I'm suggesting that I make even honorary mayor today, I'm going to take a bunch of federal forms, hopefully, just so you know what that means. But, uh, and, and the council is invited to be there at the church.
Is it during your school?
It's at eleven o'clock, uh. Okay, so just so you guys have that on your calendar, Pastor Martinez has been a wonderful boarder of the community, so, first and friend of these people I haven't met in this town. Our water project, the freshwater project, uh, he's working hard on specs and other things like that, you've already seen him up Eagle Water Tower, doing soil samples, because the new water tower is going to be bigger, heavier, needs more ground, uh, support, so they're trying to make sure that we have the support up there we need, but you're going to start seeing a lot of activity like that, he has not yet done bids on things, but that's coming, um, and, uh, we have the money, I know, um, so it's just a matter, um.
Well, I mean, you know, really, it's kind of sad, I mean, for radical, then see the first year, not much is there.
No, not a lot's going to get done, but, but, you know, he was, uh, we have a sewer project going now, finally, and then he's been on the hook with this water thing, he's pressing on real fast, um, and then I talked to Mark Pelletier today, um, he's been held up because, is it EPA, I think it is, uh, can't tell him what the real flood planning secrets is, um, and, and John Perkins is insisting that, uh, the new city hall is about flood plan, or we have insurance and perpetuity and flood, flood insurance, that's the same street you're on, Garrett, by the way, they're, they're saying it might be, I don't, I don't, there is no definition of flood plan in that area, we've never seen that.
I, I asked for a canoe for Christmas, it will be all set.
There's lots of time, I'll, we all.
So John had sent him about ten questions in September, and the flood plan issue is the biggest one, so what he's probably going to do is build the city hall up of foot, and then slope the sides away from it, and then we'll probably have better flood insurance before it's all done. That's going to be the answer, John has a conditionable paper of city hall, but it is progressive, so, you know, um, that's what I know about that, is there any other? so we can, um, that's what I know about that, so is there any other item, words of discussion?
Computers, we're all good.
We're, we're almost there, not quite, right?
They contacted me today, they have the servers for both police department and city hall, however, with the audit going on, I told them they better postpone till next week for that.
We we have talked to them, Zach's there, one who is working with us, and, uh, Dan and his staff are very impressive, Zach, I'm very impressed with Zach, and he's doing what he's telling us, uh, needs to be done, so, we've been very pleased with the service they're getting, we're on their contract now, you can call in.
Voice over internet.
Voice over IP's coming, uh, we've got two different bids, one from Verizon and then one from CPSI, CPSI is one third of the cost.
Yes.
And a quite a bit more capability for us.
It's actually less money per month than we're paying right now.
So it makes sense for us, we can hurt, so ours is currently up in Georgia or Alabama.
Yeah.
So, we have, at least have these guys, so, okay, anything else?
I'm sorry, Mayor, did did item eleven get addressed?
Oh, that's about, thank you.
I was gonna say this thing.
I'm sorry, Cindy, thank you.
Okay. Because that, not the novel, is true, the grade two, uh, oh, Main Street, is that what it's called, Main Street?
Uh, Main Street cigarette, I'll see.
Correas? Uh, we need to call, Main Street cigarette, is that what it's, okay. And and Correas is going to, and, uh, did you bring any charges on contracting?
I haven't, I was waiting for the approval.
Uh, that's all, you know, the terms. So now, we'll keep this up.
About sixty day public hearing, I think it sounds like, you know, just in the newspaper. Go ahead, describe that, Russell.
Well, actually, I I don't have a memo on.
Okay.
Exactly, well, there is a sixty day period. It's actually, it's sound like non-agreement itself.
The city council will have to approve the agreements and pass a resolution, approve the grant for two months, and then, as required by state law, when we get two or three published and notice, here, that is from the dead publication of the notice, city council, the cigarette city council should not receive a petition or harnessing the whole special election on the project, or such a petition as you said, with the special edition, it's sold upon candidacy and returns to such special election, showing that we're good on the project. EDC may proceed, but according to the agreements, the EDC was being received of, let's say, from where's building, it's saving of his research, when you purchase a new property, that he reported, we have that, of the, but he he told me that Jack, the numbers already come down so much, since he did that, you know, he's still there to be a lot more.
That's a, that's a, the city hall's gonna be made longer now instead of metal, because it can use two.
Yeah.
I learned that.
Yeah, so, uh, but it's, you know, he did a list, you know, last week, according to the process last week, but, uh, I believe, we have to have a city hearing to, well, it says the city council will have to approve the agreements and pass a resolution, so I think that's what we need to do, can we do that on this meeting on the eighteenth?
You could do that tonight, is that written? No, it's just a report.
No, it's just.
So we can't take action at all.
Sorry, because I don't know the requirement, what they have to do, did we get that?
We.
Like, what they have to follow?
Oh, yes, this is our, our attorney, well, I thought, our attorneys as well.
We, we make this, not the kind of that.
Yeah, we have to approve the agreement.
Yeah, so, and we need it, not every person.
Probably, probably need to get a.
Is it what we decided?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. It's not, it's not very good. Okay. So, but we can put it on the eighteenth.
Yeah, we can, we can put it on the eighteenth, I'll get you copies of the agreements, what she's reading from Bruton is on the agreement. So that's part of the contract.
Yeah, and, and, okay, I have, yes, I can do that, and, but, I thought, this grass is soft, but I mean, I don't, like I said, if we have that resolution, and as quick as we can do that, if we can do that, the eighteen, that would be fine.
Yeah, I don't see why you can't do that.
Just start that.
We'll just put that on the agenda then, that's like all the, and then we'll do what we need to do.
Was it you or you told me?
I told you, but he needs it.
Okay, and I'll get with Christie, just, I I just got missing it, I, now, Dr. Christie.
We do want to make sure we keep it ready.
Yeah, she does, I, I, her movies is about my mom.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure. Okay, anything else, guys?
So we will vote on the same day.
We'll vote on the agreement on the eighteenth, as I understand it, that's what starts it.
Yeah, you're basically going to endorse the, see, the economic development board is a branch of government, so you have to approve anything they do, so she's recommending these agreements. If you feel comfortable with them, then you would endorse those agreements being signed. Once they're signed, we publish a notice in the newspaper, saying that these agreements have been approved by the council, and they're gonna wait for sixty days to see if citizens organize some protest, circulate a petition, that's to give them time to organize and circulate a petition, to call for an election on that. If that doesn't happen after sixty days, then we will have the last part of that, or whatever the stipulation is.
And so just leave, we can vote on these at after.
Right, right.
The EDC board.
So these minutes that that I'm wanting to get, I'll make those available to you, these are public documents, you all will get a copy of those minutes where it was discussed, what was said, all of that, and, uh, the agreements themselves.
I understand why we would have to vote, you know, to say we want to vote, and we have to build, we can all help, help.
Just, I don't know, it's the law.
Well, it, I mean, it took a long time to get these documents, because we, all we had to work with was an older document from the last business that was given from, so we kind of, yeah, yes, and that's what I told you, well, this is my first time with that topic, and so, uh, so then we see, they, I, I'm like, there's stuff, and then we see to, you didn't have any questions on your.
We're good to go.
And they, they, that took, you know, it didn't, you know, so, uh, but I don't know, obviously, going.
Yeah.
So, that's where these come.
So they have been, well.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's kind of process.
Okay, um, are we done?
Yes.
Set the date and time for the next meeting, eleven eighteen at six thirty is our meeting to do the lines, redistricting, and then deal with this economic development issue, and then, uh, December thirteenth, correct, we are next regular meeting, I'll need at least four here on the eighteenth, guys, I I really need all five of them, because these are your districts, they're not mine.
They're ours.
They are, they are, but, you know, I, I don't know.
Maybe to consider just looking at, just moving the ones that are attached to.
Yes, yeah, you're just gonna balance them out, I hope, I hope you want.
I'm just saying, you know, actually see.
There need to watch, I've set them to counting, there need to watch.
Yeah, well, in my, see, in my district, which I, or I was the only one that knew in my district, you know, was also a, and I think that's still the same, well, the people across the street, the dog boy, but the same law over there, which I, it's weird, it's like he was talking about going down, they have these.
Macy's, well, Dawson Townes, Matt, both precincts have favored general.
Yeah.
Because of the, because of the, uh, population, the municipality population.
It's gonna just go out and take up.
And then somebody's standing there, moved to there, it's horrible.
Is this whole happening?
Maybe not, you know, they're in balance, I saw Sentinel doesn't have, um, but we're out of balance.
We can do the making type of, and I'm curious, you said we are only per se one, the whole city, and that was part of.
That's part of accounting.
Yeah, so, like, the issuers came up, you know, it's.
It goes all the way, precinct one goes all the way down to one eighty, and then east of Sentinel, there's a little bit of stuff wrapped edges of Sentinel, various precincts, precincts all right.
So we got bigger precincts, as far as.
In terms of people, it's the same size, because it's all about people, and that is.
Well, I don't know if that really did the seeds.
I don't think they did the census at all.
I mean, some of them, we got ones in the mail, and some got called, some never got.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Yeah, love it. Second, all in favor? All right, we're done, thank you, guys.